for this Kershaw County Council meeting Tuesday, October 14th, 2025. Thanks so much for being here. We've been called to order. Let's have an invocation and pledge allegiance by Councilman Brant Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Please join us. I would bow our heads for prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you with grateful hearts, seeking your wisdom and guidance in all that we do. Grant this council clarity of mind, humility of spirit, and as we make decisions that affect our community, help each member to listen with respect, speak with integrity, and act with compassion for all who call Kershaw County home. Lord, we hold your promise in Proverbs, Chapter 3, verse 6. In all your ways acknowledge him, and he shall direct your paths. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilman Tomlinson. That brings us to item number three on the agenda, adoption of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We adopt the agenda.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We got a second, Mr. Cato. And I just want to make sure, I believe we have Mr. Tucker calling in remote.
Yes, sir. I am here, Mr. Chair.
Want to make sure you're able to hear us. Thank you for being here. I know you're dealing with a health issue right now. Any discussion at all, Mr. Tomlinson?
None.
Mr. Cato?
None.
Any further discussion from council members? Hearing none, we'll move it to a vote. All in favor, raise your hand. And Mr. Tucker, it's unanimous in person. How do you vote remotely?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Hannah, it is unanimous. The agenda is approved. That brings us to item number five, public comments. Mr. DeBose.
Mr. Chair, there are three public speakers signed up tonight. The first speaker, I believe, is Rochelle Alexander, property tax. And I apologize if the first name is not correct.
Mr. Alexander, thanks. Just as a reminder, this is a time for council to hear from the public. It's not a question and answer. You have five minutes. We look forward to hearing from you. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm here about property tax. I got, I brought copies. If you like copies, pass them out. What they did was, they charged me twice. I had built the house. It was all on the same property. And I said, why didn't they just send the same bill at the same time? On one part of the property, they charged me $161. Then the other part of the property charged me $1,818.74. And I said, how come you're going to send the same time? And I said, it's all the same property. Then they told me it goes back three years. So I said, how can you go back three years on the same property, charging me taxes? And they said, it's the law. So I said, what status is the law? And they sent me for $100. It's the law. So I'd like to know where I can find a law that they go back and charge me three years taxes on the same property.
Thank you, sir. Did you already put your contact information down with your name?
Everything's on there.
Okay. We have that. Someone will reach out to you.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Administrator, if you could reach out to him.
If we could find out who his representative is as well.
Mr. DeBose?
Next speaker is Shonda Johnston, data center.
Ms. Johnston. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. From some of--
If you could speak into the mic, please, so folks can hear you. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Yes, from several of my neighbors. I understand that this permit has been withdrawn. I know that this is not answer session. Okay. A couple of things that I wanted to bring to your attention with regards to the data center. Within South Carolina, our particular area is being targeted because of the amount of groundwater and aquifers that exist in this particular area. With the data centers, there is quite a bit of impact on the water, and the water is lost. It does not return back so that anyone can use it. It is not usable. In addition to any type of data center, at this particular time, South Carolina is dealing with droughts, wildfires, also the saline problem that they're having in Hilton Head. And in addition to that, we also have water right usage with neighbors. South Carolina shares three of its river basins with North Carolina, Georgia. Demand on the Savannah River, which forms much of the border between South Carolina and Georgia, because of the increasing population growth, and the metropolitan Atlanta, Georgia. In addition to that, we also share also with upstream with regards to North Carolina, which affects our waters and streams here in South Carolina. Please, with regards to the permit being withdrawn, I suspect that it will probably be resubmitted. Please keep in mind that the water resources that we have here are limited, and do not allow a data center to come in and remove that.
Thanks for coming out tonight, Ms. Johnson. Mr. DeBose?
Next speaker is Lynn Conto, Complan.
Ms. Conto.
First, I want to say I'm very happy that the data center group withdrew their application. That pleased me greatly. Today, you get to cast your final vote on the third reading of the comprehensive plan, which will determine updates on county zoning and land development regulations that will impact our special community. This is the first time this has been addressed in 20 years. If you think about this, 20 years from now, this is going to impact your grandchildren. It means your children's children are going to either reap the rewards of what you decide to do today or suffer the consequences of that. It will prevent residential overgrowth, excessive population growth, and ensure the county has appropriate zoning rules. This plan will provide the template for many council members in the future. It has addressed public service, infrastructure, economic growth, transportation and traffic, and appropriate guidelines for land use. When this plan is approved, the Smart Growth Committee will begin updating county zoning and land development regulations. I hope one of the things that is addressed is traffic in the future. 30 years ago, there was very little traffic in the Charlotte area. I used to travel there quite a bit for horse events. Recently, this past week during fall break, I traveled to Cincinnati and back through Charlotte and spent 30 minutes stalled in traffic on one side of Charlotte and 30 minutes stalled in traffic on the other side of Charlotte. So why am I telling you this? Because Columbia's traffic's moving this way. And if we don't have some type of traffic plan in Kershaw County, with the amount of growth that we have coming, we're going to have the same problem. So what do I suggest? One of the things I'm most concerned about is who is hiring the traffic analyst for these developments? Is it the county or is it the developer? Because if it's the developer, it's always going to be in their favor. If it's the county, then it can follow a comprehensive plan. So please make sure you're looking at this factor in the future, because apparently Charlotte hadn't planned ahead. Let's not be like Charlotte. Thank you.
Thanks for coming out, Ms. Conto. Does that conclude public comment, Mr. DeBose? All right. Public comments concluded. That takes us to approval of the minutes for the September 2023, excuse me, 23, 2025 meeting. I'll note that all council members were present. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Schumake has the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Tomlinson has a second. Any discussion, Mr. Schumake, or anyone else?
No discussion here.
Those who are present and voting, raise your hand if you're in favor. Ms. Hannah, it's unanimous for the record. The minutes approved. This takes us into our ordinances. We'll start with number 7A. This is a second reading. It's a zoning ordinance for amendment on a approximate .5 plus or minus parcel. We've talked about it at length, but, Mr. Administrator, anything new on this one before we seek a motion?
No, sir. Nothing further.
Okay. Do we have a motion on 7A?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve 7A.
Mr. Tomlinson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Schumake. Mr. Tomlinson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know that we talked about this last meeting. Pastor Jones is here in the audience. And from last time you spoke, this was in regards to being able to have a piece of your property in the back that you were able to then partner more with United Way and other services to be a community provider for those needs in the community. Would you like to give any commentary?
Well, I think I would. Again, I don't really know how all this works. I want to tell you a quick story. So, little over three years ago, my dad passed away. He was my best friend. But when I was a young boy, we always watched Westerns. And I love to watch Westerns with him. But I had a question one day, because I was wondering, why is it that, you know, Clint Eastwood and some of the other ones, Roy Rogers, why they always win? And I realized, my dad said, it was in the script. I thought, really? He said, yeah. It's always in the script for the good guys to win. Well, when we left here last time, my wife chewed me out. She said, it was in the script. I typed up your notes, and you didn't go by your notes.
A smart man listens to his wife.
Right, right. So there is just a couple things, and I'm just going to read from the script, what she had typed up that I needed to say. It won't take two minutes. Okay.
Yes, sir.
As our church continues to grow and serve the community, we would like the residential part of our property to be resigned to business. We are not sure what the Lord has in store for us in the future. But this would change a lot of things. And she's got one, two, three, and four, so I'm just reading them. Extend and improve our facility for worship and community outreach. Continue to provide service to our church and community. Ensure proper insurance requirements and local regulations for the activities and conduct that we do on site. Number four was the biggest one, and I skipped it last time. If we are to decide to build onto the church, we can't go to the right, because that's the Camden IGA. Can't go to the left, because that's our parking lot. And there's really no room in the front to build on, so we have to go to the back. Our property line ends at 26 feet. So from the back of the building to the adjoining property that's residential is 26 feet. So we would have to build that way. And chances are, with our church growing, we're probably going to be building on within the next five, six, seven years. We would have to build that way, and it would have to be zoned commercial anyway, because we would go into that part of the property. And then she put, I would also like to note that the property is very small. And then she put, "I would also like to note that the property is very small, and half an acre, and the adjoining and surrounding by many other businesses such as our church, the Camden IGA, the Dollar Tree, and much more. Our mission is to serve the community effectively and responsible, and aligning with the zoning of our property. With this actual use is an important step toward the goal." So I went in the script.
Thank you, Pastor.
Yes, sir.
You got brownie points tonight.
Right, right.
Yeah, I appreciate you providing that. Legal, would, can we get just a brief on what, what this rezoning is, and is it any kind of conflict for Kershaw County?
No, there's no spot zoning concerns. The requested rezoning district, B2, there are adjacent B2 zone properties. Staff didn't, again, identify any spot zoning concerns, and there wouldn't be one with adjacency. And there's a chart within the staff report materials that shows the uses on adjoining properties. It's ultimately a legislative determination whether the use is on B2 would be compatible with surrounding properties. But again, there are many surrounding properties that are already zoned business, and it would allow this potential future expansion of an existing B2 property.
Thank you, Mr. DeBose. Thank you, Pastor Johnson. I ask council to, to support this tonight. I've been to the church many times. Not only is this a place of worship, it's also a staple for the East Camden community. It houses many different civic organizations, Boy Scout troops, meetings, and everything else. And I appreciate all you do for the community and the storage you are. I ask council to support this passing of second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Tomlinson. Mr. Schumake, you have the second, anything?
Yeah, just very briefly. You know, generally speaking, as a, as a rule, I don't love taking rezoning things to more permissive uses, but there's no, I mean, like anything, there's always an exception. I think this is an exact example of when an exception is appropriate. You're bordered on two sides by the zoning you want to go to, at least two sides. You're talking about a small parcel. The concern I always have is like when you, the data center, for example, involved a rezoning of 100 acres. And in that kind of thing, you can start seeing huge developments. You're at a half acre. So no matter what zoning you're in, you're not going to put more than one house there. Not that you ever would, but, so I'm fully supportive of this. This is, this is a perfect example of an exception to what I think is a pretty important rule, and I appreciate the work you guys do.
Any other comments or questions from those who are present?
Just one quick question.
Mr. Brazel.
Pastor, I like your shirt.
Thank you, sir.
Now, is there anything on the back?
Mr. Chair.
Creation Museum, we went, this past week, our church went to the, where they build the ark in Kentucky, and the Creation Museum.
Did you take Pastor Boone with you?
Sir?
Did you take Pastor Eric Boone with you?
I didn't, but I know Eric. Eric's a great guy.
I thought he went. Now, listen, I just had a suggestion. I, I didn't know if your church made those.
No, sir.
Or you bought it. Well, if you ever make any, you can leave the front alone, and then on the back put, "And so did my wife."
Yes, sir.
But, listen, I'm happy to support the church in any way that I can, including this. This is a no-brainer. So thank you for being here. Thank you for clarifying what your intentions are, but we know your intentions are good, and God is good, so.
Church might be getting into the t-shirt business with this rezoning. Who knows? Mr. Tucker, yes, sir. You have the floor.
Yes, if Reverend Jones can hear me, I just wanted to commend him on his, being the shepherd on his flock. I had an opportunity to meet one of his congregation members Friday at the dialysis center, where they're providing blanket for the folks there that's going through dialysis. And the young lady pastor was, she had already had some unfortunate luck through dialysis with her family members. I can't remember her first name, but spoke very highly of you, the church, the church members. And I just want to say thank you, because it seems like you always have some type of, what I would call ministry in the community, and doing good things. And so for that, we say thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll move it to a vote. For those in person, raise your hand if you're in favor of passage. It's unanimous for those who are voting in person. Mr. Tucker, how do you vote?
Yes.
That is a yes from Mr. Tucker. Ms. Hannah, it's unanimous, and passes second reading. Thank you, Pastor.
Let me ask one question, if I can. What's next?
You got one more reading.
Okay.
Yeah, there's three readings.
Okay.
And then, what's, what's the next November meeting? We have one meeting in November.
Thirteenth, eighteenth.
Eighteenth, November 18th.
Okay, all right. So I got to be here November 18th.
You don't have to be here, but your third reading will be here.
I will, I will.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, that's 7A. 7B is third reading on a joint multi-county business park. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Tucker.
I think it's supposed to be the, we're not doing it the 11th because it's a holiday? Is that the reason why?
Yeah, I believe so.
The second.
Right.
Okay, the second Tuesday is the 11th. Okay.
Yeah, I think it's a holiday under, under our scheduling.
Yeah, that's Veterans Day. Okay, gotcha. I just wanted to make sure we're giving correct information.
Yes, sir. I got it from Ms. Hannah, so I'm pretty sure it's accurate. All right. That takes us to 7B, third reading on a, on a joint multi-county business park. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Well, I'll make the motion if everybody's deaf up there or dead.
All right, we've got Mr. Schumake with the motion. Mr. Tucker, is that a second?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Schumake.
I think we got a briefing on this last time. I don't have any comments.
Okay, Mr. Tucker, any commentary or questions?
No comments.
All right, from those who are present. Yes, sir. From those who are present, any comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll move it to a vote on third reading for 7B. All in favor who are present, raise your hand. It's unanimous for those who are present. Mr. Tucker, how do you vote?
Yes.
That's a yes from Mr. Tucker. Ms. Hannah, it's unanimous and passes on 7B. 7C, next item on the agenda. This is third reading on the comp plan. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the comp plan.
Mr. Schumake has the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Tomlinson. Mr. Schumake, you have the floor.
Yeah, so, I mean, obviously, we're at third reading now, and I appreciate all the, well, one, everyone that's come out and spoke about the comp plan at our meetings, but also the Planning Commission and all the residents who came out for all the year-plus. I remember we had one planning session in the evening that probably had 30 people in the community there, where people drew maps, and that was given to the, to the consultants. So I appreciate all that. I think this is a good comp plan. It's not perfect. I did want to address two issues. In our last meeting, Ms. Knatsir, people get on to me being on the phone, I'm reading off my phone for this. Ms. Knatsir made a comment about there being an error about the field being the second oldest in the nation. I've confirmed with Planning Commission Chairman Ned Towell, who confirmed it is not the second oldest field in the nation. It is the third oldest in the country and second oldest in the states. That was an error that she flagged, and I, I ran that down. And based on the data that I could find, the comp plan is accurate in that regard. Also, regarding the traffic, I agree, traffic is a huge issue. I wanted to point out to Ms. Kanto that by and large, that's typically a DOT issue. One of the things we're looking into now on the Rewrite Committee for the zoning is what, if anything, we can do. If we can increase standards, because that's really a DOT area about what traffic flows are, what traffic counts are. The county doesn't really have a direct role in that. Doesn't mean we can't look at other options, but wanted to, wanted to just flag that. Again, this is not a perfect document. As we're rewriting the zoning code, if we come to a place where we feel like the comp plan may be inconsistent or incompatible with the zoning use we're about to adopt, we can always simultaneously change the comp plan and the zoning code if necessary. But I don't think we'll get there. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Schumake. Mr. Tomlinson, you have the second?
I don't have anything.
Any other comments, questions from those who are present?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Tucker remotely, go ahead.
I, I just want to say to all my colleagues, I had some discussion too from the last meeting on this. Let's not do like we have done in the past. When I say we, I'm talking about council as a whole. A lot of y'all were not up there, but I know I have, and Councilman Jones. Remember, this is a, a living document, so let's not let it suffocate. Let's breathe air into it as we need to, as things change. So don't be afraid to review it, or as Derek just said, Councilman Schumake, you know, make amendments. But let's do, at least every couple of years, pull it off the shelf and look at what maybe effective changes need to be taken place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, for those who are present, if you vote in favor, raise your hand. It's on 7C. It is unanimous for those voting in person. Mr. Tucker, how do you vote?
Yes.
That's a yes from Mr. Tucker remotely. Ms. Hannah, it passes unanimously on 7C. Gentlemen, that takes us to appointments on the agenda. First item we have, placed on by Councilman Cato, this is 8A, Planning Commission reappointment. Mr. Cato.
Yes, I would like to bring Mr. Lanny Gunter back up for reappointment as, as a way of emotion for his reappointment. Lanny, to give you a little background, is already on the Planning Commission. Lanny is very well-known in this community. He's a, he's a super-great guy. He's, he's a youth pastor out at...
I'll give you a second. Go ahead.
At the Cab Baptist Church.
Go ahead, sorry.
What?
No, before we do discussion, I got to get a second for you. I got you. Go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I second. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. All right. I'm sorry.
No worries.
I was rushing it along, wasn't I?
He's a great man. I want him back on there, too.
So anyway, just, um, um, just a little background on him, and, and when I put him on the commission, I appreciate the job he's been doing. He does a great job on there, so I asked the council tonight to support his reappointment.
All right, I had the second. I don't have any commentary. For those who are present, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Tucker, do you have anything remotely?
No, sir.
Hearing none, we'll move it to a vote. All those who are in person, if you vote in favor of the appointment, it's made by Mr. Cato, raise your hand. It's unanimous in person. Mr. Tucker, how do you vote remotely?
Yes.
It passes unanimously, Ms. Hannah, for the record. That takes us to item 8B. This is a Recreation Advisory Commission reappointment placed on by Vice Chairman Russell Brazel. Mr. Brazel.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to reappointment, to make a reappointment for Rick J. for the Recreation Advisory Commission.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Jones has a second. Mr. Brazel.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Councilman Jones. A lot of us know Rick and have known Rick. I think Rick knows everybody in Kershaw County. He's played a vital role in, in this recreation development project that's been going on for several years now, and I know he wants to see it through, so I'd just like to see him serve another term.
Thank you, Mr. Brazel. Mr. Jones, you have the second.
I agree with everything Councilman, or Vice Chairman Brazel said, and the good thing about Rick J. comes from good blood, because I knew his dad, Rick J., in school, and those are some good folks, and he's worked hard on this commission, and he cares about the direction it's going. So thank you, Russell, for also allowing him the opportunity to serve, making the nomination.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any other comments or questions from those who are present?
I would just say Rick's a great guy, and he's helped me out a lot, so I always like to see whatever we can do to help people that help Kershaw County stay in service.
I second that. Mr. Tucker, anything remotely?
No, sir.
All right, hearing none, we'll move, move it to a vote for those who are in person. All in favor of the appointment is made by motion from Mr. Brazel. Raise your hand. It's unanimous in favor for those who are voting in person. Mr. Tucker, how do you vote?
Yes.
That's a yes from Mr. Tucker remotely. Ms. Hannah, it passes unanimously on 8B, the appointment for Rick J. That takes us to 8C on the agenda. Planning Commission reappointment regarding Mr. Mason Wolf, placed on by Vice Chairman Russell Brazel. Mr. Brazel, do we have a motion?
Yes, sir, Chairman. I would like to make a motion to reappoint Mason Wolf to the Planning Commission. Mason was fulfilling a, a term that was vacated early. I'm not sure if that was, it's been a little over a year, year and a half. Time flies. Maybe it's been two years, but I'd like to see him get a full term subsequently. He's doing such a great job. Mason's family, the Wolfs, Jill and Kip Wolfe, are obviously...
Let's give you a second.
Strong...
We, we got the motion, got a second from Mr. Schumake.
Thank you, thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Brazel.
Thank you. I did the same thing, Danny. I got ahead of myself. I got so excited. Strong members in the community, Jill leading the charge with the, with the Clean Community Commission, so with that, I'd like to take that to a vote.
All right. Mr. Schumake, you have the second?
No, again, that's great. I mean, I, you know, Mason represents this sort of generation, next generation of Kershaw County that's going to take over the reins at some point. You know, hopefully, we can hold it for a couple of years longer, but, you know, he's, he's waiting in the wings, and if, if everybody in his generation were like him, we're in a really good spot. Especially the river cleanup that I know Councilman Brazel has helped a lot with, but the river cleanup they do is, I mean, if you haven't been out there, I mean, a whole dump truck full of trash they pull out of the river, so the whole family's wonderful.
I don't do anything with it anymore. I just started it.
You just started it. Mr. Jones?
They took the reins.
Yeah.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of County Council. Good people, good family, lifetime friends of mine, and I'm honored to be able to place a vote for Mason Wolf. I don't think we can do any better. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any other comments or questions for those who are a person?
I've said it all.
Yes, sir. Mr. Tucker, anything remote?
I vote yes.
Your, your vote is yes. Thank you so much. I'll just mention that for the river cleanup, it, it's one of those really encouraging and a little bit discouraging events. It's encouraging because the community shows up in force, they got a great raffle, people are out on the river cleaning up. But every year, it's like a 30- or 40-yard container of trash that we pick up, and, you know, a lot of that comes down from other bodies of water, I presume. But I'm glad they keep it up, and I'm glad we keep trying to keep one of our best, best natural resources clean. So with that, we'll move it to a vote. All those who are in person, how do you vote? Raise your hand if you're in favor. It is unanimous in favor, and Mr. Tucker already voted remotely, so it passes unanimously on 8C for the appointment for Mason Wolf. Mr. Jones?
I don't know if this is a point of personal privilege or whatever, but I'd like to say something that I should have said at the beginning. I'm embarrassed I didn't.
Go ahead.
Thank you. We have out here John Lee, who's a former county council member for 12 years. John Lee, he worked hard. He served his, served his county well, and I'd just like to say, "Good to see you here, buddy."
We'll, we'll accept...
He served with me eight of those 12 years.
Yeah, we'll accept the tip of the hat. Thanks so much for your prior service. You, you feel better on that side of the dais, or?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks so much for being here tonight.
We got four executive sessions, five executive sessions would take my spot.
Five executive sessions, if you got an itch. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. That moves us to council member briefings. Mr. Cato, would you start us off, please?
Yes, sir. Very short, very sweet tonight. The Town of Bethune wanted me to announce about their ribbon cutting, which will be next Wednesday. That will be the ribbon cutting for the Newtown Hall. It will start at 11:00 a.m. The Newtown Hall was moved over to the, what was the old high school. So anyone interested in attending that, they would love to have you. Next thing is October the 26th, and this is always a big deal. It's, it's up at the North Central High School. Pastor Craig in Blankenship with Bethany Westphal Baptist Church, that plays a huge role in getting this together every year, but it's a big fall festival. They have vendors, food vendors, they have games, they have trunk or treat, they have blowups, music, they have, it's just a huge event that night, that evening and that night. And lots of people come out to it, and it's, it's just a night full of fun with the kids and the families. So they want to make sure that you know about it and that you have an opportunity to come out and, and enjoy the festival. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cato. Mr. Tomlinson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to be brief as well. Appreciate everybody coming out tonight and all the input that we've received, especially with things like the rezoning of the data center. You know, that wasn't about a data center, but it was about a rezoning that could change the face of, of Kershaw County in the future, and I appreciate all the community's input, one, and I appreciate my colleagues up here and our staff and all their hard work just to kind of get educated. I can tell you, I'm, I'm not educated on those type of things. However, the issue of rezoning to, to be at risk of, of taking a, a large chunk of, of property and the rezoning it to our least restrictive use without any confirmation. I get people want to make money, and I, I hope everybody makes money. That's the American dream, but it's not at the risk of the, of the person, the citizen in Kershaw County. So I really appreciate that. And then also, next, next meeting, so November 18th, I've, I've spoken with my Planning Commission member, or not Planning Commission, Recreation Commission member, and he agreed to get, to serve again for another term, Mr. Jack Carrington. So I'd like to have that on the agenda and make sure that we reach out, and he has any paperwork or he has, has to do another application filled out. And then also, I'm in talks with a few individuals who've reached out about the Planning Commission seat that I have open, so I will also be having that on our next agenda. But if individuals who are willing to serve, we have, we have a lot of openings in different commissions. But if individuals who are willing to serve, we have a lot of openings in different commissions. We need good people who are willing to give their time and serve. The Clean Commission is one that we have quite a few openings. The Library Board, there's some openings. There are many others, but if y'all are interested, please reach out to staff or one of your council members and fill out an application. We need people to serve, and I appreciate y'all being here. You being here tonight shows that you're willing to serve our county, so if you would like, please fill out that application. And as always, thank you to staff for all of your hard work, Ms. Hannah especially, having to put up and take all of our notes. So, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tomlinson. Mr. Jones?
I don't have anything myself, but I do want to tell my councilman next to me that I appreciate bringing Jack Carrington, but he's done a great job, and I know they've worked very hard on that project, and they've done well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Schumay?
Yeah, just a few things. I second Mr. Carrington's great work. I know he's worked hard with Shane Kirkley and some others on some of these rep projects. Always good to see former council members in here. I'm sorry, I didn't recognize you because I'm one of the new guys. In fact, you made me think it would be a really good idea if we did a better job, like on our website, of having, you know, the pictures and stuff of former council members because, you know, I mean, this work is unpaid, and it's, well, it's paid, but barely, and, you know, it's basically volunteer work, and it's really important work. So I do want to say thank you, because serving, especially at this level, is a lot of work and takes a lot of time. So thank you, sir. I appreciate you being here. I imagine that when people leave this, they never come back in the building, so I'm always interested to see council members that choose to come back. Also, it's fall break, well, it's fall break for some schools. It was fall break last week for my kids. My son just went back to Clemson today, so to all those who are just coming out of fall break or just going into it, again, congratulations for having your kids home if they're away. A special birthday, I'll save that for you. We have a special birthday of one of our council members' sons up here. And lastly, I was at the state fair with my wife, and she loves to look at the agricultural stuff. I think you know you've hit a certain age when you're in that building more than the rides, and so she was pointing out some of the stuff, and there were so many people from Kershaw County that won big awards in that agricultural building and the different fairs. One I wrote down, because he was from Lugoff, is Bruce Hill from Lugoff won the blue ribbon for the largest gourd, and I just think it's really interesting, because, you know, when we talk economic development, Kershaw County has a, per capita, has some of the largest agribusiness investment in a county, of any county in the United States, much less South Carolina. And you really see that represented at local places like the fair, and you just see how Kershaw County, the work we're doing, is touching all these places, which is why it's so important that we, as a council, keep this community special and keep those things about it that are special and tact. That's all that I have.
Thank you, Mr. Schumay. Mr. Tucker?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Very, very quickly, if I may. Councilman Schumay, you really, really don't think you're overage until you go on Wednesdays to the fair, when it's seniors' day. That's tomorrow, so. But you're not old enough yet. Wish I could go, but I can't walk. With that, I just want to let everyone know that we're still working on the 208 water quality. Your representation for Kershaw County, which is, I think, if I'm correct, nine of us on the Cockboard, will be meeting over this month and next month. We're actually gonna meet Thursday at 3:00 p.m. via Zoom to hash out some particulars, and myself and Chairman Connel had an opportunity to talk to DES today, and that conversation went well. So, none of that has been finalized, and your representation from the county, so that's the Town of Elgin, Town of Bethune, and all the representatives elected and appointed will be sitting down and having some brainstorming. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Mr. Brazel?
Chairman, thank you, sir. I got a couple of things. I'd like to wish my oldest son, Merritt, a happy 22nd birthday. He is making me feel old today. So, he's up in Virginia in school, and unfortunately, we won't be able to visit with him until next weekend, not this weekend, but next, but looking forward to that. This Thursday night, at the, oh, gosh, I guess Revolutionary War Park, there's gonna be a town hall, the concerned citizens of Kershaw County, and there's quite a few of us on the panel. It'll be moderated by a gentleman from Fox News out of Columbia, and looking forward to doing that this Thursday at 6:30. If anybody would like to come, I think it's gonna be a town hall forum, Q and A, and my first time doing it, but I'm looking forward to doing that. Regarding the data center, I kind of took it upon myself to get some information from Cassett Water and Black River Electric, and the responses that I received, not to say they weren't dissatisfactory, they were very proactive in saying that they, especially Black River Electric, said that they had an obligation to provide power, but anytime there was a large-scale project, that they would be very diligent in their work and making sure that Central, is it Central Electric is who they buy their power from? That they would make sure that it was feasible and would not let anybody be affected in a negative manner, and I thought that was a wonderful response. Knowing very little about the project, if it does come back around, just, I want everybody to understand that we are diligent and we do care. Cassett Water also responded, stating that they would make sure that there was, there would be no negative impact if, in fact, they proceeded with such a project. So there's a lot of research that would have to go into something of that scale, and that's probably why we saw them pull the project. They heard the pushback and realized that it was gonna be a very diligent process by this council, and that's what we're here to do. That's what we're supposed to do. So, with that being said, if it comes back around, we'll go through those processes and we'll make sure that people are protected and homes and businesses are protected, so we would never let somebody come and kind of ruin our electrical grid or our water source. So, those are very important items, obviously, for everybody here at Kershaw County on our council. I'd like to brief everybody kind of just in person regarding a, really a neat opportunity that we're gonna have. In December, we're gonna have Ms. Myra Reese. She is the Director of DES, formerly known as DEHEC. She and I had some wonderful conversations about stormwater management, and she wants to be able to educate counties across the state as to how our role and their role will interact. At times, council members have felt like, well, if we don't do this, or if we do that, we're gonna get in some sort of violation, some sort of penalty. I'm gonna tell you, one of the finest conversations I've had with an agency director in my five years on this council with her, and really looking forward to having her and her team here in December. We're gonna get a very direct briefing from them, and they're gonna work with Kershaw County to ensure that anything that we need to address will be addressed. We're gonna work together and find solutions, and we're not gonna have major issues here in Kershaw County. That's what relationships do when you have positive relationships with others, is that you're able to find common ground and solve problems, and I was really impressed by her in our conversation this last week. So, I think a couple of people have seen some invites in their emails. Thank you, Ms. Hannah, for helping with that, and looking forward to having those conversations and solving those problems moving forward. With that is the last thing I had on my mind. I hope everybody has a great night tonight. We've got a couple of things in executive session, so with that, I'll shut up.
Thank you, Mr. Brazel. Few things I have. Post-17 has their Veterans Day program, November 7 at 11:00 a.m. It's always an outstanding program. They usually have ROTC or JRTC from local high schools participating, and so if you're available and want to support them, it will be at the American Legion in Camden. For staff, if you would, for next agenda, please place a reappointment to the Recreation Commission for Mr. Kevin Cop on with my name. I spoke with him, and he's interested in serving, much like those we heard previously. He's been working on these projects for a long time, and he's done a lot of good work, and I think he needs to see them through and have another term. Also, Mr. Administrator, for next meeting, if we can place on, and we've talked about this a little bit, but it was a prior request related to permits for pole barns, picnic shelters, and similar structures, trying to streamline that. Don't know that we necessarily need to have engineered drawings and all the expenses associated with that, but if we could get some draft language we can consider and look at a text amendment to address those type of structures, make it easier for folks in Kershaw County to put up those types of structures, I'd appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Jones. And then, lastly, I'll mention, Mr. Schumay's exactly right about the agricultural prowess of Kershaw County. Out of 3,300 counties, I think is the number, the Department of Agriculture ranks them, and we are number one, as of the last ranking, for profits per capita in the United States of America. It's pretty amazing to think about that Kershaw County with the smaller population, but a lot of agrarian land were able to do that, and there's a lot of things that go into making that happen. You have to have farmers who are competent, you've got to have inputs and feed supply. That supply chain has to be really strong, so you can actually reach those kinds of numbers. And so that's my report. Mr. Administrator, do you have any report for us?
Yes, sir, I do. Just a few updates. Woodward Park is starting to look like a park with scoreboards and baseball fields coming along. We've got some items ordered, basketball goals and some of the disc golf baskets. Side for the baseball fields and soccer area are scheduled for installation this week, so again, that's gonna start to take shape out there to look a little bit more like the finished product we hope to have.
Mr. Templar, are we still January of 2026 timeframe of opening Woodward?
So far.
Thank you.
And I know we, with, on that, is put an asterisk, we ran into a little snag with some of the irrigation, which, you know, with our luck or my luck, they went down about 15 feet and hit rock, so we're just kind of navigating around that, and we're coming up with a workaround. Obviously, the goal there is to not tap into city water just from a cost standpoint, long term, so working that one, but everything else is going along, but I'll certainly keep y'all updated on that, especially as these come to a close. KC West Parking scheduled for paving this week. Boyd Young and Copeland Rehab. Irrigation and lighting has been installed, that's, again, really starting to look like a park up there, so power meters, a lot of things are really starting to fall in place, panels, wiring for panels for irrigation. You know, and I love the fact that we're irrigating these fields. It's something we haven't done in the past, and so we spend money, time, and effort on some of these parks only to have nature come and take away our grass, and it's just not as so aesthetic or any, you know, it's just not a good look. So with all the time and effort we're spending, putting into this, I'm just real happy that we're doing it right with the irrigation, so small victories. PK and Orchard, we're wrapping up construction plans. We've got a checklist coming in for final documents that will be submitted to the county for review next week. We're gonna work together to get the package submitted via ePermitting up to DES, and with that, once we get an actionable plan out there, we will have, we'll start to brief that actionable plan to the utility owners, because there's a lot of utilities out there in that right-of-way, so a lot of work's gonna have to be done out there. So a lot of that stuff is contingent upon utilities and things out of our control, so we would look to potentially advertise the first phase of the projects in sometime in February, but again, keep y'all briefed on that. I do have Mr. Alexander's information, so we'll follow up with him on his tax issue, get him some background tomorrow for that. I'd also like to just give a shout-out to MUSC Health. I had the opportunity to be a secret shopper out there last weekend and just go and visit the ER. But I just, you know, I did something silly and hurt myself in Georgia, but I decided to really take shopping local to the next level, and I came back to Camden to seek medical treatment, so, but they were amazing out there. I just, from the young lady that checked me in for triage, to everything, to the doctor, x-rays, I just, I can't say enough about, you know, I was just some guy covered in Georgia clay, you know, with some broke bones, and, but they, the way I was treated out there was just amazing. Even the lady that was taking my billing information to make sure I paid my bills out there, she was as nice as can be, too. So, we hear a lot about some of our services out in various places, and I think it's about expectations, but I went in there needing some help, and I certainly got it, and, you know, I let, had a conversation with Darryl Ogborne today and just let him know as well, and, but I, Dr. Killian and his staff out there were just amazing, so I always believe in, and especially where I sit, as it relates to county leadership, it's important to hear those things, that what your staff is doing right, and it was from beginning to end. Nobody missed a lick, and that's, to me, it was the epitome of customer service, so very, very impressed, very grateful in many ways, and so just wanted to mention that. And, you know, while I was out on my extended stay, Lauren and Gerald just really kind of took over, and they allowed me the opportunity and the comfort to break bones and not be here, so, and keep the show running, so I appreciate what they did, and they just, they are very, it's complimentary leadership, so when somebody's out, they fill in, and it's just, to me, I feel like it's seamless, so I'd be remiss to not mention their efforts throughout, you know, the last couple of weeks, and just overall. They're just very consistent team players, so thank you all to them, and that's, Mr. Connel, I have those two action items for you for next agenda meeting, and that is all I have, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Templar, and glad you're feeling better. Mr. DeBeau, is any legal briefing beyond executive session?
No, sir.
All right, gentlemen, we've got five executive session items. We'll take it as a joint motion. I'll go through them. Executive session, item A is regarding a pending lawsuit. Item B, 12B, is a matter subject to attorney-client privilege. Item 12C is a personnel employment matter. Item 12D is regarding another pending lawsuit. Item 12E is regarding a contractual matter, and this is all under SE Code 30-4-70 and relevant sections. For the public's benefit, we do anticipate three votes, or up to three votes, potential vote on 12A, 12C, and 12D. Do we have a motion to enter executive session?
Mr. Chairman, just one correction. I believe there are four votes.
What's the fourth vote?
A, B, hold on, A, C, D, and E.
Okay, I didn't know if we had the documents ready for E.
I believe so.
All right. Well, we'll find out in executive session. So four potential votes, as corrected by the county attorney. Thank you, Mr. DeBeau. All right, I think I heard a motion from Mr. Cato.
Make a motion. We enter executive session.
We got a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Schumay has a second. Any discussion? None from those present. Mr. Tucker, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. It's unanimous in favor for those who are present. Mr. Tucker, how do you vote on executive session? Mr. Tucker, we'll get you in the conference room on the phone, okay? We are in executive session.
Thank you.
Sammy, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I can.
Okay, we're just waiting on one or two more to come in.
He survived the long walk.
Who did? Oh, I think we got a quick bathroom break then.
Have you seen that movie yet, The Long?
We got a few votes we gotta take and then we'll be done. Anything else after that? Y'all got me on mute.
Let's go live. All right, thank you, gentlemen. We've just finished up with executive session. I seek a motion to end executive session.
I'll make a motion when we end executive session.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We've got a second, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move it to a vote for those in person. All in favor of ending executive session, raise your hand. It's unanimous by those who are in person in voting. Mr. Tucker, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes, it's unanimous. Ms. Hannah, we are out of executive session. As previously reported to the public, we have four votes that we'll be looking at. We'll take them in order of A, D, E, and C. Do we have a motion on executive session, item number A?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Schumake.
I move that we authorize the county administrator to take all necessary actions and to execute and ratify all documents needed to effectuate settlement of the pending lawsuit Hentemiya versus Kershaw County at all upon the terms and conditions discussed in executive session.
Okay, we've got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We've got a second from Mr. Cato. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, any discussion remotely, Mr. Tucker? Hearing none?
No, sir, no, sir.
Okay, Mr. Tucker, how do you vote?
Yes.
That's a yes vote on 12A for Mr. Tucker. For those who are in person, raise your hand if you're in favor of the motion. Ms. Hannah, it is unanimous and motion passes on 12A. All right, 12D. Excuse me, 12, yeah, no, 12D, E, and then C.
12D?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, 12D. 12D, I move that we reauthorize and ratify Kershaw County Council's prior standing authorization, allowing the county's local outside counsel for the opioid litigation cases to execute settlement agreements on behalf of Kershaw County.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Thompson has a second. Any discussion? I'll just mention for the public that opioid litigation has resulted in significant revenue, recurring revenue for Kershaw County, and this is part of that as various defendants get named in lawsuits or as the litigation expands, you'll have settlements that come up from time to time, and that's what this is. Any further discussion or questions for those in person? Seeing none, Mr. Tucker, do you have anything remotely?
I'll vote yes.
That's a yes vote from Mr. Tucker on 12D on the motion. For those who are in person, raise your hand if you vote in favor. It is unanimous, Ms. Hannah, for the record, and the motion on 12D passes. Next up is 12E.
And, Mr. Chairman, I have a motion there as well. I move that we authorize the county administrator to take all necessary actions and to execute and ratify all documents needed to quit claim and decommission an old sewer pump station that was the subject of frequent odor complaints in return for dedication of a new pump station. The new sewer pump station has been constructed within the Sylvan Ridge subdivision and will benefit and improve overall county sewer infrastructure for the surrounding area.
All right, we've got the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Thompson has a second. Any discussion for those who are in person?
Just, I appreciate the county doing this. That's in my district and these people have had the complaints and this is some great proactive work, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schumake. Mr. Tucker, anything remotely or how do you vote?
I'll vote yes.
That's a yes vote.
I'll vote yes.
That's a yes vote on 12E from Mr. Tucker on the motion. For those who are in person, if you vote in favor, raise your hand. Ms. Hannah, it's unanimous in favor and passes on 12E.
And I'll say thank you, Mr. Schumake, on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. All right, last item for the evening before taking up adjournment is a motion on 12C, I believe.
And I do have a motion on that. It's my privilege to move that we offer the administrator the contract discussed in executive session commencing October 15, 2025, and ending October 15, 2026, at a salary of $165,000 per calendar year, with one-year renewal options that may be canceled by either party on 60 days' notice, plus a $9,600 annual vehicle allowance.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Schumake, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Thompson has a second, any discussion?
Since I made the motion, I'll jump in. I just, again, look forward to another year with Mr. Templar at the helm. A lot of challenges, a lot of things we need to do in the upcoming year. I have said this before and I firmly believe the next year or two are going to be about the most important in our county as we build a foundation, you know, with growth, with infrastructure, you know, the jail. And I would, I wanted to say this earlier, but it's germane to this particular motion. I want to point out to my gentleman here and Mr. Tucker remotely. Fielding Pringle, who is the solicitor for the Fifth Circuit, which is originally in Kershaw County, sent me an email on October 1, and she informed me that on September 26, 2024, there were 167 inmates in the Kershaw County Detention Center. As of 9/26/25, just the other week, that number was down to 130. They actually got all the way down to 126 a few days ago. They do expect the number to come up a little bit because unfortunately, Kershaw County doesn't have a resident judge, so they go three weeks without court every month, but that number is 37 lower than it was this time last year. And I would note that this council, as a whole, took efforts to help the Solicitor's Office with paralegal. We've been working with the Public Defender's Office for budget, and it's wonderful to see real improvements, and that's the kind of stuff we need to keep doing.
Thank you, Ms. Schumake. I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Schumake. Mr. Thompson, you have the second, any discussion?
I look forward to voting on it and congratulations. Look forward to you leading the county going forward.
For those who are present, any more comments or questions? Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Tucker, any discussion? And if not, how do you vote?
I just wanted to say, congratulations, Danny, looking forward to another year and many more, and I vote yes.
That's a yes vote from Mr. Tucker remotely. For those who are in person, raise your hand if you're in favor on the motion on 12C. It is unanimous and passes, Ms. Hannah, for the record, on 12C.
Thank you for your support and trust.